I'm gonna wait just a minute for people to come in. No sense doing the pledge while we're all walking in the door.
There he is.
He only had to wait for Gail.
He's early.
This party didn't start till you got here, just so you know.
Yeah. So is he here tonight?
No.
What's that?
Two people are on vacation.
It's seven o'clock and we will call this meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Let's stand for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Okonski. Christian.
Here.
Lacy.
Here.
Steele.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Henderson. Goldsman.
Here.
DeSessa.
Here.
Tinaman.
Here. Do we want a motion to excuse Okonski and Henderson? They did. Motion. Second. Second from Ms. Lacy. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. Approval of the agenda. Motion to approve the agenda?
I make the motion to approve the agenda.
Support.
Motion and support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Opposed? Okay. Ms. Lacy will read our statement of purpose for us tonight.
The mission of the Holly Village Government is to enhance our community's quality of life. Our organization strives for quality services, responsive action to citizens' requests, and cost-effective government. We promote citizen participation, proactive decision-making, and environmental quality. Most importantly, we shall always serve the citizens of Holly. The Village of Holly will be a prestigious historical village that is a green residential oasis from the city and the center of commerce and activity for the region.
Thank you. At this time, we will begin public comment. As I begin, I want to remind you, this is not a public hearing like we had at the last meeting. It is public comment time. Let me read to you our guidelines for that. Members of the public can address council, or in this case, the commission, once recognized by the chairperson. Comments are limited to a maximum of four minutes. Council may extend... Why does it keep saying council? We need to update our thing. The commission may extend this time by up to an additional four minutes by a majority vote. Prior to addressing, council members of the public shall state their name and address for the record. I noticed comments after the last time. There are some individuals who you don't attend regularly, public meetings, and to help you understand that the reason that you give your... State your name and your address is so that Genell may record that. It does go in the minutes as to who was speaking. So, we do need that stated clearly in the microphone when you come forward. Is there anyone who would like to speak? We'll go from a raise of hands and I'll just call somebody to come forward. Come forward, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's dawn.
It's dawn.
I have a loud noise. Can you hear me okay? Yes, sir?
We might want to switch microphones for you.
This didn't happen yet before.
We'll switch a microphone for you real quick. Yeah. Give us a moment. The microphone is also important for those who are able to watch this live or the recording. So, it's important to have a microphone.
Yeah, I actually had someone address me a couple of days later saying, "I'm following you." Thanks.
Testing.
Wow, there we go.
It's falling. Okay. My name is Kim Cotcher. I live at 907 Academy Road. I am not in the village. I'm in the township. What I would like you all to consider is the property that we're discussing here. What I've learned from the last meeting was that it's zoned residential. It's always been residential, but it's never been used residentially. So, I'm guessing if we are gonna move forward and it's not gonna remain vacant, which as the marshal mentioned, that there's vandalism in there, there's sexual activities in there. It's not something that we want to be known by. And instead of it being this empty building, it's gonna be something. And I'd like you to consider the brand, so to speak, of what Holly is and what you had just wrote, you know, maintaining the historical buildings and such of Holly. And we don't want to be known as abandoned buildings. And personally speaking, I don't want to be known as another dollar store or another auto repair store. And Holly is more than the Renaissance Festival. It's more than the Dickens Festival. And I'm hoping that the brand moving forward can be, you know, a place that people already enjoy coming to, but that they will look at it as even more with this being here as an enhancement. It's an improvement. It's a magnet where people want to come and visit. And by people visiting, it's also going to... They're gonna bring their money. And that's gonna benefit everybody as well, let alone our property values. Without investing any money as a property owner, we get to reap the benefits of our property value increasing in value. I really believe that this is the ground floor level of seeing some really wonderful creative changes in Holly. I'm enthusiastic and support this 100%. That's all I have to say. I hope that you are all in agreement. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, you may come forward. Okay.
Hi, my name is Nicole Bomarito. I live at 201 College Street. I live directly next door to 11. I have two small children. I bought this house thinking I was moving to a small town where I could raise my children and be in a safe community. I didn't realize that I would be living next to people bringing in transients into the neighborhood and also having a bar or speakeasy or whatever you want to call it. There's also, to me, a noise ordinance, I believe. And, you know, I do live in a historic... Well, I don't know if it's zoned historic, but my house is from 1865. It was built the year that this township was or village was established. So, I have single pane glass. I can hear everything that goes on with the construction right now. That's fine. But what happens when there are weddings and parties and things and people and alcohol? The school bus stop is directly in that lot right now. The kids walk my sidewalk to go to the school bus stop. The street is already a wreck. They use it for emergency reasons. They use it when the parade comes around. You know, the Flag Company puts the trucks down the street. My driveway has sunk a foot and a half at the bottom in the street level since I purchased the house in 2018. You know, I just... I didn't purchase the house in a residential area thinking that I was gonna be next door to a commercial building. When I bought the house, I was next to a school, which I believe they're using it for like maybe karate or jiu-jitsu, senior classes, things like that. Those are one things. You know, those are things that take place during the daytime, not after 10:00 p.m., not after there's like a sound ordinance, not after there's a problem. You know, I don't know about anybody else in here, but I really don't want a bar in my neighborhood. This isn't Hamtramck. This is in Detroit. You know, it's supposed to be Hollywood, Playful City USA, like a little bit of up north, you know, in like northern Oakland County. You know, that's what it is to me. You know? I'm from East Detroit. I own a business in Royal Oak. You know, I wanted my children to be out of that area, out of all the busyness, out of all the urban areas. So, to me, it's really heartbreaking because I am directly across the street. I look out my beautiful bay window and all I see is the construction. You know, I used to see kids playing basketball in the parking lot. I used to see the kids taking the bus. Now, I just see construction. I see dump trucks. I see campers just sitting there. I see people like vagrant hanging out. You know, I don't know who these people are. I really don't want them around my children. And as far as I know, my house is the oldest street on the house, on the block, I'm sorry. I mean, it's a complete historical block. You have the Barnum and Bailey House and the McGinnis Mansion. You have my house. You have the Winklemeyer's Old Grecian House across the street. You know, I mean, it's a very important block, you know? That school was named after one of the first teachers in this community until they changed it to the Union School. And it was actually a very historical building because on the sandboard maps, it was a three-story building and it was a fire hazard. So, they knocked it down to two levels to be safe. That's how I found out how old my house was. Because I went to the city of Pontiac and I went down the basement and I looked at all the microfiche. I've studied all the maps of Holly. I've studied everything. And it's just a shame to me that something that could be such a really great place for the community would just be turned into something that is just for people to... I mean, a wedding venue is one thing, you know? And I'm sure this is gonna be labeled as a B&amp;B to make it sound really nice. That doesn't excuse the fact that there's alcohol and booze, beer, whatever, transient people in the neighborhood, loud noises at night. You don't know, like, what are they gonna just stop the wedding or stop the party at 10:00 o'clock? Boom. I mean, even Neil Young had to pay $10,000 to the people that lived around Pine Knob when he went 10 minutes over for his concert a few years ago, $1,000 a minute. So, is that gonna happen to us? I mean, I might have to stay up all night with my five-year-old and my seven-year-old because they can't sleep or I can't sleep because I have things to do. I don't know if anybody else here feels the same way as I do. Maybe living on Academy, you're not really affected exactly like I am. But, I mean, I'm directly affected. So, that's really my point of view.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Can't get it to stop. Stop! Dismissed. Have to find the right button on the phone. Thank you. Mr. Rosell.
Hi, my name is Richard Grissell. I own the house and live in the house at 512 East Maple Street. It's on the corner of Maple and College. That one is on the historical register. I've owned it for 27 years. It was built in 1869. Just a little history. When I moved there, that was actually... The school owned it and they held, I don't know what you call that, but extra classes for kids that needed help and that kind of thing. We had buses coming and going. We honestly had kids outside smoking cigarettes on the sidewalk and there was lots of traffic that was probably more undesirable than what we've seen lately. The church was glad to have them for a neighbor, but they had a food pantry and clothing and so on. There was a lot of traffic there. Never had a complaint about it, but the thing that has bothered me the most as the owner of historic property is... I too, and I'm involved in the DDA here in Holly, as most of you know. I think historical preservation is really important. And these owners are the first ones that I've seen that have stepped up to try and do something about that. And I think that alone makes it very important. I don't think that we're gonna have to worry about excessive noise. I don't think, you know... I've had parties at my house and we have had alcohol at times, but I've never had the police there and never had a reason. I think we could maybe overexaggerate some of those things. But in watching what they're doing there, I think it's a great improvement. I heartily endorse it. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Yes, you may come forward.
Hi, my name is Alison Delaney and I live on 210 College Street. I have two... Well, two main points. So, we bought our house in 2018 as well. And we liked the fact it was a historical house. I'm an archaeologist, so I love living in a historical district. I find things in my yard all the time. And the whole block is historical. And I like living in a small town. I'm from a small town originally, and that's one reason why we moved here. And I like that it's kind of quiet. I like that our neighborhood is safe. I feel safe letting my children play in our backyard and not worrying about people down the street. And like, there's a lot of kids on our block and a lot of kids walk to school. I am a little concerned about a wedding venue or a bar being down my road with my children walking to school, to elementary school in proximity to that. And just even just letting my kids outside, having them close to that. And I also, I feel like we have a lot of wedding venues in Holly already. I don't see why we need to have more of them. And I do like the idea of the building not being vacant, though, but I don't know if that's the best use of the space. And I do like that they're repurposing the historical building, but I am concerned about the safety for the children in the neighborhood and what the building will be later on after those people sell it or change it, if it's zoned commercial, what it will be and what that means for the people who live with the children. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, Amy Hillman, 6053 Great Lakes Drive. I spoke with you during the last meeting and I did touch a little bit about the economic development that this could bring to the area. My focus at Holly Township within the last few years has been on the blight of certain buildings. We've had a lot of success within the last few years. And one of the things that I did learn in some of my education was that at the University of Pennsylvania in Philadelphia, they did do a study that found that the focus on the improvement of blighted buildings can affect the surrounding property values by up to 30%. Also, the Urban Land Conservancy says that the focus on historic preservation usually will bring an increase of surrounding property values of up to 20%. And one of their most notable persons stated that mixed use in commercial districts made up of small buildings from different eras not only are charming, but they also play an important role in fostering social, economic, and cultural vitality. Smaller, older buildings and blocks punch above their weight class when one is considering the full spectrum of outcomes on a per-square-foot basis. So, we have a lot of focus on some of the negatives. However, we do need to focus on some of the positives, that this is an investment in not only this building, but in the surrounding area as well. And being that we are a village of two and a half square miles, the reaching of the improvement of this building could be far spread. We're not just talking about this one building. We're talking about the blocks surrounding it. So, maybe the possibility of it becoming part of the historic district is going to punch up its weight class. So, there's a lot to think about, more than just the negatives of the social impact, but maybe the economic impact for the area. So, thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? No more takers? Then we will move on to new business.
Are you ready for me?
I guess.
Okay, well, good evening, everyone. I'm Caitlin Haven. I am your planning consultant from Row Professional Services Company. So, I'm gonna start off with just a friendly reminder. So, the request in front of you tonight is a conditional rezoning. The applicant in front of you in your packet, they have provided in writing voluntary conditions they are putting on this property as part of the rezoning. So, I'm gonna read through them just so the audience can quickly get an idea of what these different conditions are that would be associated with this property. So, the conditions are they... We agree to add to the amendment of the local historical district. All exterior design details issued in the future will follow the U.S. Secretary of Interior standards for rehabilitation and historical preservation. So, they are planning on... As part of their condition, they are going to voluntarily meet all the historical design guidelines for historical districts and then be officially put in the district. The second condition is that they agree to provide additional parking beyond our existing lot through an agreement with the school or village/parks for the use of Cyclone Park when necessary. So, having some off-site parking available. Condition number three is to take the MLCC, Michigan TIPS, certification in alcohol dispensing training staff seriously. So, based on last meeting, I'm not the professional on knowing everything in and out of that program, but they're supposed to help identify when someone's had too much and to not over-serve. And that certification is done through Michigan, the state of Michigan. The fourth condition is that we agree all exterior sound will be in total compliance with the village's noise ordinance of 11:00 p.m. The fifth condition is we agree to install and maintain dense perimeter landscaping on the north property line, which has an immediate residence adjacent to the property. The sixth condition is we agree to work with the village police department to maintain adequate security at all times. Number seven is we agree to eliminate the following permitted uses in 1715700 or 077C in the commercial district. So, these are specifically uses that would not be allowed to be in this property as part of this conditional rezoning. So, this would be automotive supplies, which include parts and accessory, laundromat or dry cleaners, funeral homes, new or used car lots and/or other trailer or retail lots, a gasoline station, a drive-in, drive-through services, a lumberyard, medical marijuana dispensary, a golf driving range, and automotive towing service.
Caitlin, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Just to make sure everything's completely input.
Can you pull that mic really close to you?
This, to my understanding, this runs with the land, correct? Not the ownership?
Correct. Yes. So, even if they were to change ownership of the property, this is a condition that's part of that rezoning.
That's my understanding also, but just hypothetically, if one of these conditions is... I know they're agreeing to these, but let's say hypothetically, in your future, they decide for whatever reason, they're not going to agree with one. Let's pick a black and white one. They decide they're not gonna join the Historic District Commission. All right? What are our options at that point? Is it a court situation? Can we vacate this decision tonight if it does pass?
So, it's an immediate violation. So, you would go through the violation procedure for that. So, let's say if they want... Over the course of a weekend, they... It's a new owner. Over the course of the weekend, they decide they're gonna put in a laundromat. Not gonna permit. Well, that's an immediate violation. They can't be there. So, they would go through the proceedings to remove that for whatever reason. Let's say that the landscaping buffer, if that doesn't quite get put in, technically, all of those should be addressed before they get their certification of occupancy. So, some of these different things, they would go through the violation procedure for exceeding like the sound levels or something of that nature. So, if it is... You would probably follow a similar process to revoking a special land use. So, the idea that you're taking it back because they weren't able to hold up their conditions as part of this rezoning.
And I know you mentioned, the last time we were discussing this, it was brought up, the whole idea of spot zoning. And my understanding is where we left off with that is we can proceed with this because of the conditions that are being put on this. That's gonna be a question to you.
So, let me get to the next portion, which is the actual analysis of the rezoning. So, you wanna pull up your checklist. I'm gonna get to that. So, our decision tonight on approving or denying this rezoning is on the basis of these standards. It's not arbitrary. It's not if you like them or you don't like them, the use or not use. It's rezoning the property. So, even though they may propose certain uses, specifically at tonight's meeting, we're not tying them to those. It's a rezoning. It's conditional, so they have eliminated some uses that they can change it to. But it's not the right train of thought to assume that because they're proposing it to be a wedding venue, that that's what we're tying them to being. That's not part of this rezoning application. We're changing it to a different zone conditionally. So...
Pardon me, Caitlin. Now, this, if we pass it tonight, it has to go to the council to, you know, really be made into... That it's completed.
Correct. So, we are actually, when you entertain doing a motion, we are recommending. So, you're recommending for approval or recommending for denial. And then ultimately, the decision is made by the village council. So, first standard. Is the request consistent with the goals, policies, and future land use map of the Village of Holly master plan? So, part of, as you pick apart this phrase, it talks about goals, policies, and then the future land use map itself. So, I do have behind me is the zoning map as well as the future land use map. So, I'm gonna kind of digest. And it's the idea that you're taking all three of these different components and making that decision, do you deem it consistent with that master plan? It's not just necessarily looking at the map and saying it's not consistent because it doesn't show that it's commercial. The future land use map is a conceptual map. So, it's the idea of visualizing a first idea of what this... What your village would look like. But you also look at your goals and your policies to otherwise help you determine for the justification if it's consistent. So, in the 2007 master plan, it was proposed to rezone this... This proposed rezoning to general commercial is not currently within consistency of the master plan. Part of it being is that in the future land use classification, it shows it as low-density residential. So, they're proposing it to be general commercial. The nearby properties are also zoned, are also zoned low-density commercial. So, there are not a direct property nearby that's zoned commercial. However, you do have on various different pages, so page 42 of the master plan, talking about your goals, is to promote the well-planned and integrated system of commercial and office uses to serve the needs of the village residents, enhance the image of the village, and strengthen the village's tax and employment base. This previous use was a high school and had to... And due to its large size, it is somewhat difficult to have it converted easily into a different use. Speaking outside of the report, other uses sometimes you can think about that we've seen in the industry. People change it to our senior apartments. They've seen them turn into rec centers, different things of those miniature. But otherwise... But otherwise, to say that they should, the other option being is that it's gonna become a giant single-family home, or that you are going to demolish it and then divide the lots to then put up single-family homes, would otherwise be a difficult proclamation. The applicant has also expressed to keeping a historical character, in which, as the last example I laid out, if they were to demolish everything, that would be taking up a historical character. Located on page 52, it talks about the description of the future land use classification for general commercial. So specifically what correlates with what they're proposing. And that you have to pay special attention to the, given to the development and the redevelopments of site within this district, because of the potential large visual... Okay. Okay. Due to the large visual, sound, and traffic impacts. Proper site design is crucial to these areas to help mitigate these impacts on adjacent residents, and to present a desired image for Holly at major entry points into the village. So that's our first standard, which you're looking at different analysis components on, is it considered to be consistent with the master plan? As you are aware, we are working on updating the master plan. We have been onto this section in our updating process, however. The second standard, to base your decision on, is the compatibility with the site's physical, geographic, hydraulic, and other environmental features, when you're looking at the permitted uses or for that zoning district. So the surround, the subject property is not located nearby commercial uses. The property is surrounded by low-density residences. There does not appear to be any natural features or environmental features that would hinder the redevelopment of this site. Standard three is the evidence, the applicant cannot receive a returnable, a reasonable return on investment through developing the property with at least one of the uses committed under the current zoning. And talking to the... The subject property was previously owned by a religious organization, and then by the Holly area school district, which possibly established the existing location of the local community place as a school or place of worship. To repurpose the vacant building as a commercial use has the potential to bring back a reasonable return on the property to the applicant as, as the building currently is not being used, and has the potential to provide a service directly affected by its closely proximity residentially zoned properties. There are other uses that are in that R1B zoning district, so such as church, a church, but otherwise, there are a very limited number of uses that could be potentially put into that building for reuse. Standard number four is the compatibility of all the proposed uses allowing the proposed zoning district, with surrounding air uses and zoning influenced by land suitability, impacts on the environment, density, nature of use, traffic impacts, aesthetics, infrastructure, and other potential influences on property values. All surrounding uses are zoned R1B or single-family zoning district. By establishing a use whose purpose is attracting and retaining large groups of individuals for an event, then traffic density of persons or demand on other infrastructure will increase. Because there are no other surrounding properties designated in the future land use map, it could potentially generate some undesired issues with the surrounding districts. It does appear that, in review of different buffering requirements for that zoning district, to see if necessary, would mitigate any potential nuisances. So the idea is, is there enough with those conditions in which, is there enough to keep those nuisances at bay, specifically ones we've talked about tonight, which is primarily no ways, other nuisances regarding traffic that's been complained about in the past. Standard five is, does the capacity of the village's infrastructure and services sufficient to accommodate the use, the uses permitted in the desired district without compromising the health, safety, and welfare of the area? Due to the large size of the property and its proposed nature as a gathering place, it would appear that it would not need an increase in your infrastructure demand. Due to the previous uses in the building, it would appear that it is likely adequate to support that infrastructure for commercial development. Development of the building to reduce its vacancy will promote the health and safety and welfare within the district, but could potentially cause some newness nuisances to those surrounding the area. Standard six, does the apparent demand for the types of uses permitted in the requested zoning district in the Village of Holly area in relationship to the amount of land currently zoned and available to accommodate the demand? Properties that are currently zoned C in the village are relatively large, particularly north of Oakwood Street. The land area of the subject properties is similar in size, and it can be implied that the property has enough area to accommodate the length of the room we use for commercial activities. Standard seven, and our last standard, has the request previously been submitted within the last one year, or the past one year, unless conditions have changed or new information has been provided? This is a new application, so this standard is considered to be fully fulfilled. So the discussion currently tonight is weighing those positives and negatives for each of those standards to help bring you to the conclusion that we need to make a decision tonight. I know the applicant is in the audience, so I'm sure they, if you had any additional questions for them or me, I'll answer their questions.
Vincent Kari, would you like to come and make a presentation at this time as well?
Sure.
So we have, sorry, Kari Cuxley, 202 South Saginaw.
And Vince Iafano, 202 South Saginaw.
In regard to the conditional rezoning and those conditions, we have a printout of the screening that, for the dense perimeter screening, and I don't have enough because my computer, I'm sorry, my printer pooped out on me, but I have enough to show you the north side of the property. We plan on utilizing arborvitae's as soon as the weather permits, to do some additional screening on the property.
Go ahead and put, give that down.
I know that parking has been another topic of discussion and questions, and since the last meeting, we had a couple of different parking experts out. One, who is a parking expert from Traffic, Michigan Traffic and Safety, Oakland County utilizes them, they do all of the traffic, parking meters, security. He came out and did a, a very, walked the property, checked it out to see how many cars can actually parked, be parked in the existing lots. He gave a conservative, conservative estimate of 205 cars, and that's with utilizing valet parking as well. I had two valet companies come out to give us some estimates, walk the property, give their interpretation of how he'd like to utilize parking, and their numbers were right around the same number as well. So there is adequate parking on-site within the lots, and within our strip of parking in front of the building. We also met with, for backup parking, for more parking, we met with the schools, Scott Roper today, and we met on, they have created, they've recently reviewed their parking lot use regulations with their legal counsel, and they have a parking lot application process for one-time use reservations. So we won't have a blanket agreement with them, they're not gonna do that with anyone, and this is for anyone and everyone who would utilize any of the school's parking facilities. So that's still something that they're finalizing their terms and conditions. We talked about insurance and liability, and this was something that they were developing because they're also getting requests for parking from all kinds of soccer groups, whomever, to utilize their parking. From Great Lakes, when they had to use parking, extra overflow parking for a presentation they did. So that would be a same, the same procedure for everyone who would like to use the parking lot, and it's a pay-per-space situation, depending on who it is. Obviously, a nonprofit group isn't gonna pay for space for their, but for, they, they have a, an agreement in place that we could use for overflow parking as well. Anything else you wanna add that I'm forgetting? Any questions that we can clear up about those conditions?
I have two questions. One is, I walk around the village almost every day, and until last week, when I got my packet, I have always assumed that that parking lot off the northeast corner of the village was part of that property. Apparently, it's not, according to the maps you gave us.
Which, are you talking about these two parcels here, these two parking lots?
Yes.
Those are, those are our parking lots as well.
Well, it's excluded here, I don't know why.
But they're not in the... They're separate parcel ID numbers. And do they not need to be rezoned, or what's the...
I think that they do.
Yes. Because they were part of that building purchase. They were just on a different parcel ID number.
So you will be using those, that parking lot for your future clients?
That's included in your 200... Yes.
Yes.
Okay. My only other question is, it's my understanding that you own the bed and breakfast on Saginaw Street, but individual rooms are not available, that people have to rent the entire building. Is that gonna be your format on College Street also?
We haven't decided upon that business process yet.
Okay, that's all I have.
That's probably gonna be room by room, but we haven't figured that out yet. Anybody else have questions for them?
I have heard a couple people say about speakeasy. Are you gonna have, or is that out of the...
Our current liquor license is a, our liquor license that we can utilize on the property is a catering liquor license. A catering liquor license does not allow you to do a cash transaction of per glass, per consumption alcohol, like, a transaction of money. It's a one host paying for that. So, no, not under the current liquor license that we hold.
Okay.
So our weddings are normally over at 10:00, so now...
Eleven.
10:00 to 11:00, so we would meet the sound...
Noise ordinance as well.
Yes.
Good point. Anything else? And this is, it's more than just weddings, correct? It's events? It's corporate events, it's showers, it's birthday parties, it's graduation parties, anything and everything events. And what part of the building is utilized for that primarily? Currently, we are utilizing, if you're familiar with the building, we'd like to use phase one, which would be the auditorium, the earliest part of the building, the 1913 section of the building. The south end of the building.
One point on the back here.
Perfect.
It's actually this oldest part of the building here, which is, the entrance is right here, so it's the south end of the building. This is where the auditorium is, there used to be a clear story where that, where that pitch wrote this.
So, I've looked at the list of things that you have put in as your conditional items, and is there a reason that some of the other items in that area were not included in, in your list? Such as? Athletic club, medical and dental, and veterinary clinics, restaurant, I can understand because of what you're looking at, business schools, bazaars and carnivals.
I feel like that list could go on and on, I don't know.
It, it does, but there are, there are specific things in the list that, that could go in there yet, when you, when you make this change. Did you have automotive repair services on your...
No. Automotive repair and service would still be available.
Right. I don't think anybody's gonna put automotive repair and service in the building after what we've done to it, but, but, to go back to your first one, athletic club, there's a gymnasium in the building. I wouldn't wanna rule that out of keeping that amazing vintage gymnasium there. Medical, medical has such a broad spectrum of, what if, what if there was a, there's a spa in Fenton called Rejuve Ave Spa, they are under the umbrella of a medical facility, that it's, it's a med spa, so to speak, where high-end clients come there and get treatments done. I wouldn't wanna rule that out as something that could potentially be there, maybe not when we're there, but in the future. Anybody else have something?
I'm a little bit concerned about the sound. What is, what do you expect from these events? Because I do understand the, the residents' concerns, but I, I don't really see it being some, you know, AC/DC or heavy metal, you know, blasting the windows out. Is it, I gotta believe it's respectful, and, I mean, there's obviously gonna be some sound, but not to the point where it's gonna be rattling the neighbors' windows. Is that...
It's, go ahead. You wanna answer?
I don't think we've had any issues at our other event space and, at the vault. So we're, you know, there's a DJ, but it's normally a couple hours. And that building is very soundproof, though, you know, there's three rows of brick, and plus the lath on the inside. So my crews have been working in there for the last couple months, and have had pretty loud music, and I don't think we've, we've, I don't think there's been any complaints. So I can't imagine our weddings will probably be a little bit less noisy than what's already been happening.
Auditorium is centrally located, surrounded by offices and classrooms.
It is, on both sides.
Yeah.
On both sides.
And then the kitchen's on another side. Actually, it's completely surrounded, so...
It is.
That makes me happy.
Yes.
A smaller issue perhaps, but it was brought up at the last meeting about a possibly moving, taking a look at moving the bus stop there nearby, was that hap, did you happen to discuss that with the superintendent when you met with him?
We don't have an issue with the bus stop there. If, if the school administration would like to move it, it's totally fine. The school, the children are dropped off at 3:00, what time they get out of school? 2:50? That's...
Normally way before our events.
Anything were to be happening.
And we let the parents park in the lot now, and we're, we're totally okay with it.
And that's a neighbor's camper, I wanna add. So somebody asked if they could park, we get asked all the time, can we park a couple trucks in here in the lot? You know, we don't have adequate park, absolutely. So...
Or they take up the kids at 6:30, 7:00. At 6:30, the parents are in the lot.
Okay, this is, this is, this is not public comment time, so we need to limit it to conversation between the applicant and, and the commission, please.
So you're not looking at opening up a bar for the homeless, then?
Definitely not.
Okay, just wanted to get that figured out.
Definitely not. Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you. So Caitlin, guide us a little bit.
So, again, we have those seven standards, and so there's positives and negatives associated with each of them. And it's about evaluating it and looking at those conditions that they have put on themselves for this rezoning, to say, does it address all of those standards? That would be your justification for approval. If you find that one of those standards is not sufficient, then it would be a justification for denial. And it's important to mention in a motion for denial is to mention which standard it does not specifically meet. So that way, if they were ever to appeal something, they know exactly what they're appealing the basis on. So I guess that's my guidance, that I can come up with the top of my head.
What I'd maybe like us to do, then, is go through each of these, one by one...
Okay.
And have discussion on them, and come to at least a consensus on whether it is a yes or a no. And then at the end, then we make a motion based upon our, our walkthrough. Does that sound good? Okay? So let's, let's look at number one, or in our packets, it says A.
Yep.
Is it consistent with the goals, policies...
Is it consistent with the goals, policies, and future land use map of the Village of Holly master plan? So, any discussion and thoughts on that one?
That's not currently the case, but it can be in the near future.
Yeah, because we haven't gotten to this point in the master plan.
True.
So...
Right. Pull that thing up close to you. You talk kind of quiet.
Sorry, it's because I don't want people to hear what I say. I mentioned last time that with the master plan, it's, you know, you want to stick with it once it's solidified and we know exactly what we're working with. Currently, it is residential, but like we've discussed, it's, it's not, it's not, it's, it's not. It's not a, our one residential plot of land. So I think, I personally think we have to take that into consideration. Regardless of what color highlighter it's in right now, what actually works there?
So if, if I can reiterate too, part of that's, what you're pointing to is justification on the goals that are in the master plan, right? You're looking at the redevelopment, you're looking at that potential.
Right.
The other one that talks about specifically the general business is, are you paying special attention to those different nuisances associated with it?
The one comment I would make in this is, when we look at, this master plan is from 2007, correct?
That's what it says.
We're talking about thirteen years ago.
2007.
At that time, this was occupied by a church, which fit the, the zoning that was there. And prior to that, it was, it was a school which fit the zoning that was there. And so what it was occupied as during the times that we had reviewed master plans in the past, it fit with what, you know, the zoning fit with the current use. At the, at this time, that those, those two options, which are about the only options for something of this nature in that location, in that zoning, doesn't fit, you know, it, it's not what it's, it's not what it has been used for recently. It was sold from being a church, and it is no longer. So those options of what it could be under the current zoning, I say, you know, I'm looking at it going, it has to change in order to do something with the property. The, the current owners are not putting in a school, and they're not putting in a church. So we need to evaluate that, and that, I think, comes into the, the purposes, you know, the, the policies and the goals and the future use. And our, our master plan at that time did not foresee a change that is inevitable with that type of piece of property. So do we want to do kind of a consensus on these? Because we end up with a final vote on the whole thing, so... How do you feel on this?
I agree with that statement, and I think it actually, I think it takes care of two and three as well, for the most part.
So are we...
It was very clear.
Comfortable with number one being a yes?
Yes.
Okay. So then we look at number two, or B, fitting the physical, geological, and hydrological, and other environmental features in the proposed zoning change. Really, the comment in the statement says, you know, there really are not issues with the change based on the nature of the property already, what it is. Anybody else have comments on that? So are we comfortable with a yes on number two, or B, in our sheets? Okay. C then, is there evidence that the applicant cannot receive a reasonable return on investment through developing the property in one of the uses permitted under the current zoning? Any comments on that option?
Unless they're going to run a school, I mean, that's the only way that they can't get back their, see, their value of what they have.
Profitable?
Yeah.
It's so limited to be able to have a church or a school.
Yeah.
That's what, that's what we're limited to. And otherwise, I mean, we're going to have to, I don't know, get our magic wand out and draw this person out to get the perfect scenario, as far as that goes.
So there wouldn't be any reasonable return?
Are we feeling a consensus then on C, that it's a yes?
Yes.
Okay. Then we move to D. Is the compatibility of all the potential uses allowed in the proposed zoning district with surrounding uses and zoning in terms of land suitability, impacts on the environment density, nature of use, traffic impacts, aesthetics, infrastructure, and potential influences on the property values? Does that one, it's basically, can the infrastructure and the surrounding, basically the infrastructure, is that able to handle what is being recommended for this piece of property?
It has in the past.
We're looking at streets, and water, and sewer, and those kinds of things.
It was a community, yeah, it was a full-blown, everything was filled. Night school at night, daycare during the day, preschool. I mean, I could go on and on with the number of uses that, you know, that it had, and...
Yeah.
I mean, it was a full house, sometimes you had to park blocks away to get to the, to Margaret to deposit your money at the credit union. Or to vote.
Yeah, voting when it was, when we were there to vote.
Wrapped around hallways, zigzagged all over the place. And I think that any improvements on the buildings are going to, it's going to make the homes, I don't really agree with values going up, but I do agree with the desirability for a nice building, something that's nice, well-maintained, well-operated, rather than a vacant structure, or, I mean, I hate to say, even when the church had it, roof was a mess. I don't know what it is with me and roofs, but I can, I can spot a bad roof a mile away. And you could just see it starting to leak, and it's going to deteriorate. And I just feel like having an occupant is just going to improve on the look of it, and then the desirability of the surrounding homes. And I say that as a realtor and as an electrician, I mean, there's, you know, there's a lot to say for maintaining a building and the desirability of the houses that surround it.
Do we feel we have a consensus then for this one to be a yes as well?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's move to E. Does the capacity of the village's infrastructure and services, are they sufficient to accommodate the uses permitted in the requested district without compromising health, safety, and welfare of the area? This one is very similar to the last one.
Yeah.
You going to speak to us a little bit here?
So D, or number four, so we talked about a little bit, but you're looking at also those impacts on the environment, so noise or anything of that concern would have been thrown into D as opposed to E that isn't so much the case. When you talked about is, are the water or sewer capacities, that's more E.
Right.
D is more talking about, is there, really talking about, is there enough buffer or enough nuisance protection for the surrounding residents? That's really what D is trying to get at.
Okay.
All right, we'll go, they did show us where they are going to be putting up the buffer on the north side.
Sure.
I think that they are open enough that if any of their neighbors do have a problem, I think that the neighbors could come to them, they are very open people, that I have noticed.
I, I agree with, with that statement, but how do we, we have to remember that it might not even be us up here, it might not be them there.
It's in the future.
Right, how do we put, make it so that it's ironclad that...
And we are looking at the property, we are not looking at the individuals.
Right.
That's, that is key, that's what you're coming to say, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yes. It needs to not be about who is...
Individual, yes.
Developing or requesting, it needs to be about what it, what it is.
As well as traffic. I mean, again, not looking at, looking at the building versus the owner and possible, possible future use. What's that going to, what kind of traffic could that create?
It's going to create some, because it's a giant building with a lot of use and a lot of space.
Exactly, but...
There's just, it's inevitable.
Right. And you know, you, and I agree with you, and you said, well, it used to be, used to be, used to be.
Yeah.
And, and I don't disagree with that.
Right.
However, you know, you also have to understand that when you have unhappy or discontented residents, when they, when they bought three or four years ago, they weren't buying into that kind of environment. Saying, yes, change is there, I'm not going to argue that there isn't. But we have to be, I think that when we look at this decision, we have to try to be fair to the residents as well as the property owner. And I think that because that is, there are a lot of children on, on that street in the neighborhood, parents are concerned about their children's safety. I don't think that's a bad thing.
No, I don't either.
So...
But I think that's a lot of places. I live on Michigan Street, right by Oakland Street, and I am watching the neighbors' little kids, and I told my kids, you stay away from Oak, Oakland and North, because it's a nightmare there. And I really would rather they stayed away from the other intersection, and I'm watching the neighbors' kids. It's, it's kind of everywhere is how I kind of feel. And I've taught my kids, when they were younger, to stay away from that, and I even talk to the neighbor kids, stay away from that intersection, that's not a place you need to be. I just don't, the hard part is, is it's a giant building, it has to have a purpose.
Well, that's, that's exactly how I feel, like you, you, if we're talking about just a field that was a park, and we want to develop on it, or, or, you know, knocking down eight houses to do this, like this, this... Personally, if I bought a home across the street from a 40,000 square foot vacant building, I don't know that I can necessarily have the expectation that it's just always going to be
Quiet.
This quiet vacant building across the street from it.
Minimal.
Yeah, if it were a church or a school, it would have traffic issues as well. And fact is, I agree with you, the, the applicants have said they're going to comply with the noise ordinance, and that's going to be, that condition will be carried forward regardless of the owner of the property. So I'm confident that, that these, that this condition here will be met in a positive way.
We have a, there's a saying, I'm sure you all have heard it, that we're crowing this earth. That's why we have to take care of it. We've got to take care of it for the future, because it's not ours to keep forever and ever. If you like, the, the residents, it's the same way. I do respect that they live there, but they're not going to live there forever, and that building is going to be there way longer than anybody that's sitting here today. That's my thoughts, and I'm really concerned about the future of it. Because we're going to leave this panel one day, and somebody else is going to take over, and I just want to make sure that that building continues to be a positive impact on the community instead of, you know, a maybe or a negative.
And I do have to say, this is the one spot where, you know, you do feel for the individuals who live in the neighborhood. You know, you do, you can relate to the challenges that are there. And I think even by, you know, saying a yes to this does not say that we totally disregard those concerns. But we also see how it, it can, how something's going to happen no matter what, with the property. To what extent do we want, you know, do we go, not in my backyard, to every option that can be in this location? That's, that's our challenge. When we look at where this piece of property has, has come, you know, in the purchase, in the last sale process of this piece of property, over a, a number of years, to try and get a developer to come in and do something that fit more closely with a residential type of scenario, no one would take it, because when you come back to the profitability, they all said, there is, the profitability is not there. And so, you know, you start to look at that then and go, what is the next best option? And I think that's where we have come with it today. And by putting up the, the buffer, you know, the, the natural landscape, you know, on directly adjoining properties, as a planning commission, we would require that of any, any new construction going into, you know, a commercial next to a residential. They're doing what would normally be required in that. I think the other scenarios, when you have the building and a parking lot and the street, creates that kind of buffer, though it may not feel like it. It, I think it does. So I, I think we've really beat D apart. If we move, we really, and, and we kind of talked about E before we did D. So, the infrastructure of what the village has, the roads are sufficient there to handle what, handle the, the facility because it's such a big building and has been there that long, that the ability to utilize the streets that are there, I think, can do that. I'm looking for any other comment or thoughts on...
It's not controversial, I'm not going to say anything.
Well...
Well, I'd like to say a couple things. One is, as evidenced tonight, the immediate neighbors are either not in favor or are very leery of the future of what's proposed. As far as upgrading the building, that's a plus for the whole community. As far as using the building as opposed to having it vacant, that's a plus for the community. The future impact, I'm hopeful.
Sure. So as we look at, does the village's infrastructure handle that? Yes? Okay. Let's move to F then. Does the apparent demand for the types of uses permitted in the requested zoning district in the Village of Holly area in relation to the amount of land currently zoned and available to accommodate the demand? Help me with that one just a little bit. It feels like it's written awkwardly.
But that is a direct quote from the ordinance, so I want to appropriate the change.
Basically, is it big enough to be vacant?
Is, is it big enough for a 44,000 square foot building? Right, is that the basic idea of that?
So part of it is a little bit, I don't want to say not applicable, but is unique to this situation is that there already is a building located on site in that capacity... um, in that capacity. Part of that too is talking about, is there enough, do you have so much commercial that moving this to be also commercial is burdensome upon the village as well? Um, so part of that is, is there a co, is there-
So is it creating too much commercial space?
Correct, so some of it is the idea that, um, like if you had a bunch of vacant, um, industrial spaces and you wanna do another parcel that was industrial, do, is that need, um, actually merited or something of that nature, um, associated with it? But then go, as the analysis I mentioned, it's talking about the size and not just, does the building fit? But is there enough room on that site to meet the parking, to meet what the, what landscaping or buffers that you wanna encourage, um, being on that site too? So it's not just the building, it's the cohesiveness of the whole design of that property.
Any comments on this one?
It's accommodated a lot of stuff in the past.
You guys, you're working with the magic formula, right? And it can be implied that the property has enough area to accommodate the land typically used for commercial activity. I assume that's kind of a suggestion?
Um, generally speaking, um, as far as like part of that analysis, so worst case scenario hypothetically, moving down the line, there's nothing in these conditions that say the school has to stay other than, well, actually, I'm gonna take that back, I don't, do a lot in historical preservation, so once it becomes a historical building, I know there's different things that keep the building intact. I don't know to what extent it does, um, to those different calipers, so I would revert those to a different expert. Um, but if you were to do some different modifications to that building, is there room to do that on a commercial site such as this nature? So you, there is room to accommodate the variety of different commercial uses that could potentially be on that site.
Do we want a historical opinion comment?
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
Come in then.
Hello, Robert Donnie, Ford seven five Comstock, yes, I'm employed by Vincent Carey. But, um, my previous work with Oakland County, I'm a registered architectural historian by the United States Department of Interior. I'm a certified historic preservation, um, graduate level through Eastern Michigan University. So, the limitation of the US Secretary of Interior standards, which the applicant has put upon themselves, makes it very difficult to put many of those uses that would be allowed in that building without altering the building. And they have said they would not alter the building, would adhere to the standards.
Okay.
The standards, um, mostly deal with the exterior of the building?
The, um, majority of them deal with the exterior, but also the interior too, because there are some phenomenal spaces there, which they're keeping.
I think that, that's what I wanted to know.
Okay. Thank you. So are we feeling yes there then too?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And we basically said the last one is a yes because they have not had another application within a year. So we have reached the end of our, um, requirements to look at and, um, we have come up with, um, a yes for all of them. And so at this point, what I would like to do is entertain a motion.
Um, G, read that again, cause that should be, they have not submitted before, so that would have been a no.
Oh, okay. Correct, thank you.
Yeah.
And it has to be a no. Okay. Are you gonna guide us on a motion or?
I was gonna throw some, um, points you will want to include in a motion, um, for approval or denial. Um, so part of it is, is the idea that you include the address, so that would be one eleven College Street. Remember, this is a recommendation to the village council. Um, so start with that first, it's a, um, recommendation to the village council either way. Um, it is specifically for eleven, um, one hundred and eleven College Street. Um, if it's something that you're looking for, um, support, I apologize, the section number has been changed, um, since this checklist was developed. Um, so you would be looking that it fulfills the requirements in one five seven point zero eleven E.
One five seven point what?
Zero, or wait, so you said zero eleven E as an elephant.
Eleven E, okay.
And then you would also mention that it is a conditional rezoning and the property would, um, follow the written conditions that have been presented.
I'll entertain a motion.
Support.
You gotta actually vocalize the motion.
Yeah.
I'm looking for someone to make the motion.
Yeah, I can't speak it out, so. Uh, I make a motion to approve.
To recommend.
To recommend to the council.
The rezoning.
The rezoning of-
The conditional rezoning.
The conditional rezoning of one eleven College Street, section one five seven dot zero one one E.
Based on?
Because it is compliance, it has, is in compliance with.
Compliance with.
Because it is in compliance with-
With one five seven point zero one one E.
And I apologize for forgot to mention that we are rezoning it from R one B to, um, C.
Commercial C.
Yes.
Rezoning from R one B to commercial C.
Okay. Do we have a, go ahead.
With the written conditions as provided.
With the written, because free, conditions as provided.
Written conditions as provided, thank you for doing that. Do we have a second?
I second.
Motion and second, uh, roll call vote on that please.
Okanski, Christian.
Yes.
Lacy.
Yes.
Steel.
Yes.
Clark.
No.
Henderson. Goldsmith.
Yes.
De Sessa.
Yes.
Kinaman.
Yes. Motion passes. Are we, we have no old business? Um, any comments from commissioners or staff? Do we wanna just start over here? Nothing, nothing?
I just wanna say that, um, I really followed this on Facebook. There was a lot of bickering, which really bothered me and turned me off, but I did follow it, I did take into consideration, um, I prayed about it, um, but I just don't see an option, um, we've got a buyer and we've got a legitimate business person, they want to put a legitimate business in there and it's a big building, so something had to be done. It was difficult and I did listen, but I also, um, I, I think you're a tremendous help. I mean, it really was, uh, wonderful guidance on your behalf for us to, to come to this.
Nothing? Start down there. Any comment? Any comment? Any comments? Um, I would like to also say, I followed all of the comments that were out. Um, I read all of the emails, I've looked at all of the information. I spent a lot of time reviewing, um, ordinances and, uh, conditions and, uh, the, the paperwork presented and, uh, one of the reasons that we have a checklist like we do is so that we, we are able to stay objective rather than subjective in, in our approach to something. And, um, saying all that, it, I want any resident to know that the decisions were not without taking your concerns into consideration. Um, and, uh, thank you, I would like to thank, uh, those who spoke, um, and those who have sent emails and remarks, uh, that, that they have been civil, that, um, we, um, this is the way government works. Um, and we work together as a community and as, uh, appointed and elected officials. And, uh, we wanna thank you for, um, for working together to, to come to, uh, this point today. We do have a final public comment, if anyone would like to speak at the end.
Jim Perkins, one oh four Elm Street, wanna thank you for making the right choice. We have a, some folks who come into town, take a dilapidated building and are willing to invest a huge sum of money to bring it back to life. I commend you all, good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else care to speak? If we have no one?
One more.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see.
Mr. Hutchins.
Mr. Hutchins, he's in, in the back.
Joel Hutchins, uh, four nineteen Thomas Street. I, at the last meeting I spoke and said, you know, I've been here fifty years. Uh, futures are built on positives, nothing can change the past, but you guys tonight, the positives did change the past. And it's good to have a vision in this town because that's where we're headed, positives, not negatives. Uh, thank you for all your concern, doing your homework and everything else as a resident of Holly, thank you very much.
Anyone else care to speak? If not, then I will adjourn the meeting at eight twenty-two PM.